This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, The Star Ledger, and Highland Park Planet on January 4th, 2023, and was posted on Borough Hall website at www.hbborough.com and on the bulletin board Borough Hall at 221 South Fifth Avenue on Highland Park in New Jersey and has remained continuously posted as required by law. In addition, notice of this meeting via Zoom was emailed to the Home News Tribune, The Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on May 12th, 2023, and was posted at the Borough Hall website at www.hbborough.com and on the bulletin board at 221 South Fifth Avenue on Highland Park, New Jersey on May 12th, 2023, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my right and left of our council chambers. I mean, could you do this in the pleasure of religion? Council members, do you have any questions on the agenda?
You're welcome.
Oh.
Roll call.
Mayor Foster.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Kim Chouhan.
Here.
Councilman George. Councilman Hale.
Here.
Council President Hirsch. Councilwoman Kim Chouhan. Councilman Postoni.
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier.
Here.
Borough Administrator here.
Here. Councilmember George and Hirsch have excuses for tonight's meeting and also everyone knows Councilmember Kim Chouhan is out on maternity leave. Councilmembers, do we have any questions on the agenda?
Come here.
Approval of minutes. Motion to approve minute as distributed for September 19, 2023. So regular session. Roll call.
Councilwoman Kinnon Vera.
Yes.
Councilman Hale.
Yeah.
Councilman Postoni.
Yes.
Now we move to council report. Councilmember Postoni.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Tonight I'll be covering my own report as well as a few of my colleagues who are unable to be here tonight. I'll start off with my own portfolio first, which is the Arts and Recreation portfolio. So first up on that, I just wanted to reiterate like every council meeting that we have grocery store transportation and online food shopping assistance available through the Department of Community Services. We extended these services while we are temporarily without a supermarket. If you have any questions or need more information, please reach us in staff at Community Center at 728190052. A couple of events to report on. One was just this past Sunday at the Community Center, the Halloween Costume Parade and Festival. It was a great turnout, a great event. I was there with my kids. They had a great time. A lot of their friends around. There was a costume parade, they had a bounce house, face painting, and just us having a great time. So thank you to Kim and the team at Community Center for another wonderful Halloween celebration. And then coming up, have the Veterans Day Parade. Department of Community Services encourages everyone to come out and line the streets for Veterans Day Parade on Saturday, November 11th. Starts at 11:00 a.m. at the Doughboy Monument with a ceremony and then after the ceremony, a parade will proceed down Rarden Ave and end in New Brunswick. Next, I have a couple of Community Center programming highlights to announce. So the health education series that they're currently offering at the Community Center continues this Wednesday, October 25th, and will be there for three more weeks after this week. It's from 1:30 to 2:30 p.m. and it's at the Community Center. The program helps promote, support, and sustain older adults on living healthier, more independent lives. Next up, also tomorrow, Wednesday, October 25th, we will have the Day of the Dead Celebration. Doors open at 5:00. Program starts at 5:30. This again is at the Community Center. It's going to be featuring a movie, an educational session, graphics, and these for kids and some refreshments. Hopefully we're gonna check that out. And that is for Hispanic Heritage Month and Indigenous Peoples. Then lastly, Community Services business, I'd like to announce that Winter Youth Basketball Registration just opened. Deadline to register without a late fee is November 1st. You can register in the Bro's MyRec website, highlandparkrec.com. And then moving along, so to cover Stephanie's portfolio finance, a couple of quick things to mention there. Today we'll be voting on the 2022 audit. Happy to reiterate that there were no findings or recommendations, which means your audit was clean, came with a lot of financial help. So thanks to Ray and Laurie from the Finance Department for all their work getting us there. And then next up, there is a rent control board meeting tomorrow, right here, Wednesday, October 25th at 5:30. And that's all for finance. And then last up and moving on to Council President Hirsch's portfolio, there is a thing to mention in the public works realm, and that is the Competitive Power Ventures application to build a power plant in Keys B, which is in Woodbridge. Next to the already existing power plant has been withdrawn earlier this month. Highland Park was an early adopter of resolution to oppose a second power plant in that environmental justice section of Woodbridge. And it was one of fourteen of its highs that eventually opposed the plant and it had the support of our Board of Education, Sustainable Highland Park, and our Board of Health. Highland Park is just about five, six miles away from where that power plant would have been built and would have suffered the increased carbon emissions, which in that matter that was so dangerous for the ones that are going business. So we all will just suffer the consequence of the increased carbon emissions adding to the climate crisis for years to come. So, you know, again, I'm just very happy that that application was withdrawn. It's a great win for the environment and justice for environmental, excuse me, environments and justice reasons and for our town. And I think that was everything that I had to cover for tonight.
Sure, you missed somebody reporting to cover.
I think I got it all.
Thank you. Councilmember Hale.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jason, you can do all the reports if you'd like to. Number of things. So downtown night owl markets are going to start Saturday, 10/28. These are the outdoor evening markets where local artists, artisans, and craftsmen come in. And it's a great place to do your holiday shopping and shopping local. The dates for night owl markets are Saturday, October 28th from 4:00 to 8:00, November 12th, which is a Sunday, from 12 to 4:00, November 25th, Saturday, from 4:00 to 8:00, November 26th, Sundays, from 12 to 4:00, Saturday, December 9th, from 4:00 to 8:00, and Sunday, December 10th, from 12 to 4:00. So a great opportunity to go out and shop local. Also, this coming Friday, October 27th, at the Farmer's Market, there will be pumpkin painting all day from 11:00 to 5:30. So kids will get small, free small pumpkins, or you can buy bigger ones to paint and to display. There'll be live music from the Mike Norduzzi Trio, and then trick-or-treating tote bags filled with treats from local businesses. Then later in the week on Halloween, on October 31st, there's downtown trick-or-treating from 2:30 to 5:30. So bring your totes and you put one down and you can hit up the local businesses for treats. Again, Mike Norduzzi and Sneeze Greeds is the band that will be playing for Halloween. Also, live music again with Dennis "Nick Donut" as Bruce Frankenstein, the original monster of rock, when we play it at 2:30. And then a jack-o'-lantern contest. You can fill out a contest form at mainstreet.org/jacko-lantern to enter the contest and learn more. And you can look at the entries. They'll be up on Tuesday from 2:30 to 5:00. Lots of good things going on in the next, uh, those. So as I mentioned at our last meeting, now is a difficult and troubling time for many people in our Jewish community and our community at large. That still remains the case and likely will be that way for quite some time. But I did want to just point out a few of the many ways that our community is coming together and organizing in response to this crisis. Couple of weeks ago, many local synagogues or under the leadership of AA, Josh Ostrin, and Rob Harper, set a goal of bringing four pallets of supplies to Israel. They came up with 37. And it's a pretty amazing amount of donations that were given. I'll also point out that this Thursday night at Pino's, there is an event. They're hosting a Beer for Israel event at 8:00 p.m. A $5 donation to Jewish Federation Israel, some aid emergency fund, give you a wristband and allow you to drink beer until the keg runs dry. So it should be an event and an important event for raising money at Pino's. And then I could go on with many, many others. I'll add one last one. If you are interested in a blue and white tree ribbon to put up around a tree as notice of almost 200 people missing and kidnapped, to hang on your tree until they return, you can get those at the Highland Park Conservative Temple, www.hpct/cae.org is the place. There are numerous of events going on around town in support, so please take advantage of those. And that's my report.
Thank you. I've seen quite a few ribbons on trees and houses and it's a wonderful thing. Councilmember Kinnon Vera.
First, I'd like to thank Jason for giving part of my, giving my report to a hospitalization. I haven't been able to attend many meetings and Jason and the rest of the council have been filling in for me. So thank you for mentioning the Day of the Dead tomorrow. And I'd just like to let everybody know that my prayers are for everybody who may have family over in Israel. My boss is there right now, so I'm praying for you all.
Thank you.
Borough Administrator report.
Yes, Mary, I have a brief report. It's actually a request for residents and a quick report out on our meter replacement project. I'm pleased to report that as of the 30th of September, we've gone past the halfway point in terms of the exchanges we're looking to do throughout town. So that's a great milestone. That also means we still have probably close to 1,200 meters to go. And we were really hoping to get this project done by the end of the year. We've hit some supply chain issues, some other challenges, but we're making really good progress. And so the request is, if you haven't scheduled your replacement, we now have fairly decent amount of inventory, we'll be sending out a reminder letter from the borough to you. You get that letter, please take action and call National Metering Services, and their phone number is 1-888-448-0009. So it's very important that we push this project to completion because if it extends too long, there will be some additional cost chart assigned to us from the contractor. So that means we need your help. We need access to the basement. And we just ask that if you get that letter, and I should have started with a thank you to the, I guess, more than 1,800 of you who have actually participated in the program. So thank you for making your homes available to the workers and bearing with the minor inconvenience of the replacement. I will mention we do have a supply of the Sabbath compliant meters. So make sure if you're scheduling your appointment, if you haven't already been put on the waitlist, that you make it clear you're interested in one of those models. And before they replace your meter, just confirm before they take it off that this is in fact a Sabbath compliant meter. Because once the old meter comes off, we can't put it back on. So I'm pleased that we have some inventory. We'll expedite as much as we can getting those Sabbath compliant meters in. We will have enough before the end of the program to accommodate all requests. So again, please call National Metering Services if you haven't already had your meter replaced, and they can be reached at 1-888-448-0090009. And when you get our borough reminder letter, please read it and make that call at that time too if you haven't already. So that's my request and report, Mayor.
Thank you. Borough Attorney's report.
No report, Madam Mayor.
And then I have a very brief report. And this is a happy one. The Mayor's Teen Advisory Council, their goal this year is to talk to, their goal this year is to meet and speak with influential leaders in town. And in that vein, they were pleased to meet with our Borough Administrator, Terry Jover. And they spoke with Terry about the redevelopment project and efforts in town and Highland Park, what Highland Park has in mind, kind of services Highland Park have in mind. So.
I appreciated the invitation. It was a really great group of kids.
And their next meeting, their next meeting is Monday, November 13th, and they're arranging to meet with Dr. Nicosi at the high school to discuss her thoughts, her ideas, and her plans as well. So that's really good. Today I had an opportunity to attend the Mayor's luncheon, the senior luncheon at the Community Center. And it was good. It was spirited as usual. They enjoyed their meals and they were happy to engage. And one of some of the things I spoke about was the concern that most everyone has is Rite Aid. And as just about everyone is aware that Rite Aid has filed for bankruptcy based on the opioid lawsuits that they are facing. And I'm happy to report that our Rite Aid here in Highland Park is staying in place. It's not one of the Rite Aids that was listed last week as closing. So our Rite Aid is doing extremely well. I'm very happy for that. And they have no plans of closing our Rite Aid. I also gave them a quick update on stopping shopping to say that it's still in attorney review. The attorneys are still going over much-needed paperwork and agreements, but they're engaged. And the most important part about it is that they're engaged and it's in attorney review and they're working through the different issues that has to be worked through so we can finally get our supermarkets. Highland Pizza, I spoke with the owner a week ago, and he told me that they have changed their mind. They're doing extensive inside renovation. So they're remodeling the entire inside. And once that's completed, then they'll do an opening. They went in another direction rather than just refurbished. They went for a complete renovation of the insides and they're redoing a lot of the things in there. So hopefully we'll see our beloved Highland Pizza back in place again. And the seniors were also concerned with some garbage issues. And while I was talking to them about the issues that they were concerned with, our BPW truck pulled up in front of the senior housing building and were addressing the concerns. So they were quite pleased with that. That's my report for tonight. And now I'm gonna go to our first public participation session. Time allotted is 21 minutes, three minutes maximum per speaker. Comments are limited to items on the agenda. If you wish to speak to something that's not listed on the agenda, please do so at the second session, open session later. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes have elapsed. She will give you a warning of 30 seconds remaining. I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement, or if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided, or if this statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Comments from members of the public attending the meeting in person will be heard first, followed by those attending on Zoom. If you're interested in speaking, please step up to the microphone and give your name. For those on Zoom, please use the raise hand button or star nine on your keypad and that are raised, or your raise hand button on the keypad. And Borough Clerk will, Borough Administrator will announce you when you come to speak for those who are on Zoom. Now, if anyone wishes to speak, please give your name and address. And this is item on the agenda.
Yes.
Yep. There are lots of interesting items on the agenda. I'm interested in having someone talk, someone who's going to vote tonight, speak to ordinance number 23-2080, which increases the density in the CBD district. And the wording is maximum, to revise maximum dwelling units building for CBD district from 33% GFA to blank. I'd like to know, I'm not exactly, I mean, I look up what GFA is. I don't know what that is exactly. But I presume that means that you want to increase the density in the CBD in a way that no one knows. And one thing that I'm sure, maybe you know this, maybe you don't, but Highland Park is a very dense town. And I compared the density in Highland Park to both somewhere here, to both the Tushen and New Brunswick. And Highland Park's density per square mile is about 5,000 people per square mile. But Tushen, no, Highland Park is over 8,000 per square mile. The Tushen's 5,000 and New Brunswick is 9,000. You can do the math yourself. So I'm not quite sure why you are so anxious. I mean, you talk about wanting to become the Tushen. Actually, I think a lot of people in Highland Park kind of risked and lived in the Tushen now because of the redevelopment that you're proposing. And so I'd like someone to explain to me why, number one, it's 33% of GFA, whatever that means, and what the future holds with the undisclosed number for the revised revision.
Thank you. Councilmember Hale.
Sure. Under our current existing zoning laws, it is, a building cannot have, on the central business district, cannot have more than 33% of it containing residential housing. So what it means is that all of the buildings on the first level are commercial or retail buildings, but you can't have an apartment on the second building, but the total percentage of it could not be more than 33%. So that's an artifact of a different time and an artifact of history that we're trying to change. And so our part of the redevelopment has always said that we would like to have retail and commercial space on the bottom floor and then residential on the floors above. So what this does is it eliminates the barrier to having residential above existing commercial and retail spaces. So it's essentially saying that if you have a three-story building in a commercial business district, you have commercial and retail on the bottom floor, there used to be a limit to what you could have on a second or third floor. This would remove that limit and allow for additional apartments on the second or third floor. This was brought about by a number of folks who are interested in having businesses on the bottom floor of one of our existing buildings in the central business district. But in order to make that work, they would like to be able to have apartments above those buildings. And so this was a change that our planner and our professionals recommended to sort of be in compliance with what we're hoping for most of downtown, which would be retail and commercial on the bottom floor and to have residential on the floors. It doesn't change anything about height or restrictions in the central business district, you know, other than the redevelopment tracks. So I'm happy if, Terry, if I missed anything, please jump in if that's an overview.
I will. But you are now talking about four and five-story buildings.
Not, not with this resolution. This resolution doesn't lead to existence.
I know that. But you're talking about four and three zones to allow four and five-story buildings, which presumably would be residential from the second floor up. So what kind of density are you talking about? Why can't you put a number in there?
All this does is eliminate the square footage requirement that is in our current. You can have apartments on the floors above the first. That's what this does, is you can have apartments on the second or third floor.
Presumably, the point of it is to significantly increase the density of residential property in the central business district. Significant.
I would not say significantly, but yes, the idea is that we'd like to increase density in central businesses. That is the goal of this council. This is stated pretty clearly and pretty loudly.
Terry, would you like to?
And I would just add that, and I had been on receiving end of the conversations, and in fact, it was more often than not conversations with property owners of existing buildings who wanted to make significant renovations and upgrades, potentially adding in a retail establishment. And then they were interested in kind of offsetting that ground level use with some residential up top to kind of make the project work. And then they discovered this provision, which would limit their ability to make their projects work. So this was really, if I could say, mostly genesis out of small projects with existing property owners and smaller existing buildings that were limited in what their scope and potential were because of that provision.
But I think a lot of people do not believe we're talking about any kind of small redevelopment. I mean, track C, the developer.
To be clear, this doesn't, what we're talking about tonight does not talk, it is not relevant to the redevelopment tracks. So it is, it's.
That's part of the central business district.
So the redevelopment tracks are already, as the redevelopment goes through, those will be hired and those will be based on it. This is, this is going to affect the smaller things that Terry said.
And just, Mary, the redevelopment plan and the default standards in the plan are what govern the tracks A, B, C, and D zoning. Not the over, it is, what do you call it? There's a technical term, but basically supersedes the underlying zone, the redevelopment.
So A, B, C, and D remain 33%?
No, A, B, C, D remain what it says in the redevelopment.
Which is?
I, there is no set residential density, but there is no prohibition or requirement that it not exceed the 33, you know, there is no limitation. That 33% GFA doesn't exist in the redevelopment plan currently. So this is really targeted at the properties that are covered by the CBD zoning in.
The existing properties.
Yeah. So this would be future, future.
And in the future, if say somebody wanted to, not through redevelopment, do improvements or a new project, yes, that would apply to that property as well, but not the redevelopment areas. Those are governed, the standards are governed by the plan, not the CBD's.
Well, if nobody else has questions, I have another question. And that's about South Third. I've talked to a number of people in the last week or so who are surprised that maybe they thought South Third was dead, the whole concept of closing the street was dead. And they are wondering why it is that the borough has gone forward with this without really checking to see how many residents really want the street closed.
Fine. Thank you, Mary.
Mayor, I do see one hand raised.
We have some.
Sorry, I didn't see the answer.
And these are on the agenda items.
Yeah. Hi, my name's Ken Evans. I have a student record, so a lot of commonism. But I do have a question. Your ordinance pertaining to the bond with the library. So, will the bond ordinance approval result in a tax increase for next year? And that would be.
Can you repeat that? Will it result in what? You said, will it result in?
A tax increase for the next year.
Oh, that's the question?
Yeah.
No.
It will not.
No, Terry, you want to get into that, that we have the bond that we're proposing, we're not putting it through tonight. We're gonna table, we're still doing open comments on the bond question. We're not approving it tonight.
We're not approving it.
We don't have a court.
We don't have a court to approve it tonight, so it won't be approved tonight.
But to, can I follow?
Okay.
I guess what I, my answer, I would agree with Mayor, but I would say we haven't finished. We're just starting on the 2024 budget. We know there will be future debt that we'll have to pay back to pay back this bond, and that will, we'll have to budget for that. But it, you know, it'll, I don't know that you can directly attribute any future tax increase to the specifics of a bond ordinance for the purposes of the library. It's all part of a big amount of money we have to fund, and we may have a good year and some surplus and some other things where we don't have to raise taxes for that year's payment. But then circumstances can change. So I don't think it's kind of a tough question to answer either way.
All right. Thank you.
My name's Dylan Stewart. I'm also a student at Brookings. And I just want to piggyback on the ordinance 23-2080, and if the increase in residential space above the commercial buildings will increase traffic in the area, and if that has been factored into your guys' thoughts on that.
I think it's important to remember.
Councilmember Hale, would you like to address that?
Yes, I would. Yes, I would. I think it's important to remember that the majority of these, of the central business district are small. Small units. It's essentially a two-story house, right? And so that what this is doing is, is allowing for apartments on the second story, which they had not been allowed before. So they have parking requirements. There are parking minimums that will still be a part of the central business district, and those are still applying. So.
Cool, thank you.
Hello, my name is Martha Nia Khalil. I'm also a Rutgers student. I just had a question about ordinance 23-2077. I noticed the language for the library renovation is very odd. So I was just curious on what renovations the borough was thinking of and how the council came to a decision on what renovations to do.
I'm gonna have our borough administrator answer that question because.
I should tell you don't come to me.
She's intimately aware of this. We have many decisions.
The library is, and if you look at the full ordinance language, that's not just in the agenda. You can see, we had some, I'm laughing because I see a little library under that doing the eyes, you know. We have some roof issues over there and we need to appropriate additional money to handle the additional work. So there's also other renovations underway through a grant and to match onto the borough that are underway at the library. This is specific to the necessary improvements to address the wire getting in.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mayor, I see we have two hands. Looks like phone number ending in 4445. You're up next. Please state your name and address.
Hi, Lois Leving, North Second Avenue. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance, thank you. Ordinance number 23-2079. I did, I'm gonna start choking. The one and two family residential lots, nonconforming, I think was described as undersized. Is that correct?
We missed that. What was the last thing you said? Under five, you said?
Undersized, too small. You know how the lots used to be 25 wide by 100 and now they're 50 wide by 100 or 150?
I'm gonna ask councilman. Yes, we're gonna answer that question. Councilmember Hale, would you like to address that?
So one of the things that we have nonconforming lots that don't, that are odd shaped and odd sized. Under existing regulations right now, if you have a nonconforming lot and you want to do a what is normally a permitted use on your nonconforming lot. You have to go to the zoning board to get a variance just because you have a nonconforming lot. So an example is that if you want to put a shed on your lots, that can trigger a variance, but it always triggers a variance for a nonconforming lot. So by taking out the idea that just because you have a nonconforming lot, you have to go to the zoning board for a variance, saying that it makes it a little bit easier for people who have undersized lots or different lots to be able to make improvements on their houses without that extra step. And so what we're doing is we're just saying, just like everybody else can sort of go without a variance for a permitted use, nonconforming lot owners can now go for permitted use without going to the zoning board for a variance. So the idea is to try and help those folks be able to make improvements on their property, just like folks with conforming lots are able to do now.
Okay, what about the, what is the coverage for the impervious on residential? Used to be around 50%, while commercial could be 100% impervious.
Rather than sort of make that, unless Terry has an answer, I don't know the specific of that answer right now.
Lois, we can, we can review that and get back to you about what the coverage should be.
Okay, because you. Thank you. You understand that impervious is just going to add more flooding. And then when you have all these, a little bit of grass that's along the avenue right now where the where the garden houses, mansmen might be building, that's going to disappear. And so then we have less permeable soil. And, and there's the flooding. What are you doing to prevent the flooding, the horrific flooding?
Speaking of, what? As it relates to, I just want to make a point clear, related to the ordinance specifically. The only thing that is being exempted from the board visit is the lot size, the nonconforming lot size. If there was an impervious coverage variance needed, if there was a side yard setback variance needed. You know, you have to otherwise meet all the standards of our ordinance. And if the only thing that's sending you to the board is your underlying nonconforming lot size, that this is what is trying to be the relief to those property owners. I should mention there are quite, we did an analysis when we did our master plan. I don't have the number at the top of my head, but we have a lot of nonconforming lot sizes. I'm an owner of one. I'm familiar with that condition. So this is meant to be, this is not an unusual thing in our town. I think a lot of that, the conforming lots that was established after a lot of the other ones were already in place. So I just want to make it clear to Lois, I don't have the answer to the larger question she posed right here. But that this ordinance doesn't exacerbate impervious coverage issues or anything. Because if you had, if you need a variance for that, you would have to go before the board.
Okay, well, I'll be back. Thank you.
Mayor, I have one more hand raised, and I should state for the record that we currently have 13 attendees from here. Jessica Hudson, you're up next.
Hey, I just wanted to go back to the ordinance. Let's see, is it 23-2080? And I wanted to clarify a couple of things that you had just mentioned, which was my understanding, based on what you just said, was that the redevelopment plan does not need this ordinance. This ordinance has nothing to do with the redevelopment plan. And that if higher density was wanted in the central business district and it was already included in the redevelopment plan, then this ordinance is not, does not apply. Is that correct? This ordinance has nothing to do with redevelopment plan. Is that correct?
It's for existing lots. It's for existing businesses and residents that are within the business district.
But my question is, I mean, my assumption that this was, is, was a prerequisite to any changes or amendments to the redevelopment plan. Is that correct?
I think I'll state it my way. But this, this ordinance amendment does not impact what's already in the redevelopment plan for downtown tracks A to D. So that what's in the redevelopment plan currently is not impacted by this ordinance proposal.
But is this ordinance proposal required to implement the redevelopment plan?
No.
No.
Okay. Okay, so then the other question I have is, what is the, like, what is the reason for this new ordinance? What is the, why, why is this new, I know you, you explained it, but I'm still unclear in the purpose of it. What is, what is the impact of it?
I'm gonna ask Terry to simply, simplify.
I'll do my best. It is, there, there are bulk standards in our central business districts that prohibit anything more than 33% of a building's gross floor area to be residential. And what we discovered through conversations with various property owners over the years, myself and our professionals, that we were, we were running into an awkward conversation because, A, we have that condition throughout the downtown. There are a lot of properties that have ground level retail with residential on the second, third floors. That's not uncommon. So we have these nonconforming buildings. And we had people looking to make improvements to buildings, potentially bring them into more conformance with some of the goals of our economic development goals. But they were, they wanted to put residential on the second and maybe third floors of their existing buildings. And this ordinance was an impediment to that potentially. And so this was simply taking away this restriction on residential uses, limiting that to 33%. It doesn't allow them on the ground floor. All the other standards in the central business district zoning apply. It's the only zone that has this requirement in our ordinance. And so this was viewed by our, I can understand why it is confusing because it is kind of an esoteric provision in our ordinance. But we've run into it and it's, it's, it doesn't comport with the other things we're doing through redevelopment in other conversations where we're trying to encourage reinvestment and people living downtown. And when we approached the Economic Development Committee and the rest of the governing body, which this recommended tweak, which we called it a tweak. There was agreement that it didn't really make sense anymore and we didn't even know why it was there in the first place.
Thank you, Terry. I do have, I know my time is probably very close to being up, but I just have one other quick question. Which is, I remember, I think it was last month, that Mayor Foster indicated that we would be able to see plans for Track C as soon as December. I wanted to know if we, if that is still expected, if that timeline is still expected.
I'm working on it. I'm working to try to get those plans to keep the timeline.
So available in December.
That's, that's the goal.
Okay, thank you.
No, I don't see any others. I would do, and we, but I did happen to notice you were supposed to end at 7:39, so I just didn't realize that.
We're over allotted time, so you can come back and speak at the next session. Thank you. Ordinance requires second reading. Ordinance, ordinance requiring a second reading.
May I have a motion to continue the public hearing of ordinance 23-2077, bottom ordinance providing for the replacement of the roof and other related improvements to the public library by and in the borough of Highland Park in the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriating $400,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of 380 bonds or notes of the borough to finance part of the cost thereof. There to to the November 21st, 2023 council meeting.
Laura Turner, would you like to explain why that we're moving this forward?
How you been, Mayor? This is a bond ordinance and under the bond law in New Jersey, it requires a two-thirds vote of the full majority membership of the council. And tonight, we have three members of council here. We would require four votes. So the matter has to be carried and the public hearing will be heard on the 21st of November for final adoption.
Roll call.
Any motion?
Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Now roll call.
To table, sorry.
To table.
To continue.
To continue.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilman Pistonik?
Yes.
Ordinance requiring first reading. Ordinance number 23-2078 and ordinance concerning monetary mitigation for replacement of trees. For payments of replacement of trees.
Yeah. And ordinance concerning monetary mitigation for the payment of tree replacement has been duly introduced by the Public Works and Public Utilities Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Motion to adopt or reject?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilman Pistonik?
Yes.
Ordinance number 23-279.
An ordinance by the borough of Highland Park, Middlesex County, New Jersey, amending chapter 230 land development concerning new construction on nonconforming single and two-family residential lots has been duly introduced by the Economic Development and Planning Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilman Pistonik?
Yes.
Please report on introduction of ordinance number 23-280.
An ordinance by the borough of Highland Park, Middlesex County, New Jersey, amending chapter 230 land development concerning residential density in central business district has been duly introduced by the Economic Development Planning Committee for the consideration of passage on first reading by title.
Motion to adopt or reject?
Motion to adopt. Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilman Pistonik?
Yes.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject the following consent agenda items, 14A through 14K?
Motion to adopt.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilman Pistonik?
Yes.
And now we move on to appointments. Human Relations Commission, Frank Kanas and Pauline Devonish. No confirmation needed. Rental ad lib board, Pauline Devonish. And she's the, she'll be alternate owner occupied. Mayor Tina Advisory, Jayla Singh. Motion?
Oh, motion.
Second. Second. Roll call.
Yes.
Yeah.
Councilman Pistonik?
Yes.
Now it's time for the second public participation. The borough clerk will monitor the timing and indicate when three minutes have elapsed. She will give you a one in the 30 seconds remaining. I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Comments from the members of the public attending the meeting will be heard first, followed by those who are on Zoom. For those on Zoom, please use the raise hand button to speak or star nine on your keypad. Or the raise, I said the raise hand button already. Until then, you'll be muted and we'll have our first public comment. Please give your name and address.
I'm Ray Elliot Almit. I live on South Adelaide Avenue, whereby the Highland Park is considered temple in Highland Park. I want to thank Mayor Elsie Clausen for her show of sympathy to our community. These days, the day after the Hamas massacre, she came to my synagogue to see with us and comfort us. And she presided a vigil at the Monday afterwards. I want to thank all the people that stood with us during this difficult time. I'm here to represent the grieving community. I'm not exaggerating when I say that each person in my community knows someone or someone who knows someone. Adi Vital Kaplun was the daughter of someone I grew up with. She was murdered in front of her two sons. Hamas terrorists who broke into her home shot her dozens of times in front of her children. Her body was then booby-trapped so that it would explode when she was found. 1,400 people were murdered on that day in ways that we can only describe as barbaric and a crime against humanity. The Jewish people have not experienced that horror since the Holocaust. I have a friend in Israel, two of her neighbors, Eitan and Maya Reggev, are among the 222 hostages in Gaza. They were at the music festival. Yesterday, journalists viewed body count footage of the massacre. They'd never seen such brutality. Hamas is pure evil. But what makes this evil even worse, as if it could be worse, is that there are people who celebrated it. It barely took a couple of days. Rallies erupted celebrating the massacre and calling for more genocide against the Jews. University professors called it exhilarating. Members of Congress defended it and blamed Israel. University leaders, educational and community leaders were so spineless that they couldn't rise to the moral challenge of condemning it unequivocally. Sadly, we have examples of this in our home community. People whose ideologies blind them from seeing the moral difference between the intentional murder of innocent civilians versus the tragic loss of civilian life in Israel's lawful and legitimate acts of self-defense. On the one hand, they flatter themselves in their compassion for dead Jews. On the other, they claim self-righteousness when they condemn Jews for trying to defend themselves legitimately and lawfully from being slaughtered. That is moral bankruptcy. Because of that moral bankruptcy all around us, the inability to call evil evil and the inability to clearly condemn mass murder and the equivocation between barbaric murder and lawful legitimate collective self-defense, Jews are scared in this country, in the state, and even in this community. Jewish students are afraid of being subjected to abuse in our very own schools ten miles away at Rutgers. Like every single Jew and Israeli I know, I wish that there were no civilian casualties in Gaza. But I also wish that the terrorists wouldn't launch rockets at their own hospitals, killing their own innocent people. I wish they wouldn't locate their launchers next to schools. I wish they wouldn't store weapons in mosques and conduct terror. and conduct terror operations from residential buildings. I wish they wouldn't use their own civilians as human shields. There's only one entity responsible for the civilian suffering in Gaza. It's Hamas, an organization whose sole purpose, as defined by their charter, to destroy Israel and to kill as many Jews as possible, not only in Israel, but throughout the world. I wish good people would recognize that clearly and condemn them. I wish good people would understand what we're dealing with here, a brutal, ruthless, evil, barbaric terrorist genocidal regime. Defending Hamas is defending evil. Israel's war against Hamas is a morally just war. It is a war for the existence and survival of the state of Israel and the Jewish people. It is a war to ensure that no one will ever rocket a home, no terrorist will shoot up a music concert, and no sick murderous monster will ever again shoot a mother in front of her children or raise a hand against a Jewish child. I pray for the safe return of 222 hostages. I pray that Hamas is defeated and crushed decisively. I pray that no civilian, either in Israel or Gaza, live in fear. And I pray that good people in this community and this state will have the decency and the moral clarity to see this atrocity for what it is, pure evil. I want to thank you again, Mayor, for your support. And thank you all for standing with us.
We're getting to 7th Avenue. I may lose it. We're all in issue, as you can see. Why are we here? There was a hint that somebody, some people may be coming out condemning Israel. We all have PTSD from three years ago when we were in this room, this time of year. And the hatred we saw from our neighbors shocked and stunned the whole community. I want to thank you, Mayor, because I met with you. The synagogue, the synagogue authority committee, and the worry on your face so much us. You said, what can we do to help? The captain said we need security, we need armed guards. That's the level of fear we have. It's not rhetoric, it's not politics. And I appreciate we spoke on Sunday. And I thank you again. What I would ask for is, what we would like is a strong statement, as many other organizations have done, supportive of Israel and condemnation of Hamas unequivocally. I had the idea, actually it was about my wife, it was my wife's idea, to have a blue and white light on the doorboard, like he did for the Ukraine, Blue and Yellow at the time. A way to show the community that the town is acknowledging it in graphics. The sad thing is, I was told that may not be a good idea because somebody destroyed the light, turn it, or do something to it. I have come up with some other ideas to support Israel. I've been told, well, that may, someone may tear down that sign or that ribbon. I think it's a shame that we can't stand up for antisemitism because we're afraid of antisemitism. We've talked before, there's hate in this community, but we have to be stronger than the hate. And I think having public displays of support for Israel, our neighbors, our friends, will stand up. Most people are cowards who are antisemitic. They're not going to come out, I think, and do something. I've had Israelis fly in front of my house for 20, 23 years. I've never had a negative comment for it. You talked about the Shabbat compliant meter? The man who came to my house for it says, oh, I see your flag. So you went the Sabbath friendly one? I've only heard good comments. So I think when you stand up, you can't be knocked down. It's when you're groveling already and asking for permission is when you get knocked down. So we decided, we're no longer defending, I'm not debating. We're, we're standing proud and we're going to defend, we're going to defend the Jews. I was going to read a list of the hostages tonight, but I decided it wasn't necessary. We all know, Rami Maanet spoke eloquently about. It's tragic and we look forward to your continued support, Mayor.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca. How you guys doing? I live at 52 Brookdale Court in Highland Park. I'm a professor on the Rutgers Music Faculty. I'm also an affiliated faculty member in the Department of Jewish Studies. And I've lectured and published privately on antisemitism. I'm also an Orthodox Jew. Over the past several years, I've engaged in extensive social justice advocacy in support of residents of our town from vulnerable communities. I did this because I thought it to be right. I'm not so naive as to have expected reciprocity. I know full well that an insidious antisemitism lurks within progressive movements. I'm here in the wake of the horrific pogrom that Hamas perpetrated against Jews in Israel on October 7. I understand, I've heard rumors that some residents of Highland Park may ask the council to issue a statement condemning Israel or otherwise pressuring it, and I ask you urgently not to do so. Many Highland Park residents, perhaps all of us, have immediate connections to people who were murdered, tortured, raped, beheaded, burned alive, or abducted, from the youngest babies to the oldest Holocaust survivors. There are no degrees of separation. It's clear to us today that it's merely an accident of history that they are gone and we are not. Whatever one thinks of the current Israeli government, it has an obligation to protect its citizens from this kind of terror. While the world wonders why the Jews won't just make peace and roll over for further acts of genocide, our people, including Highland Park residents now on the front lines, are fighting for our very existence. Shocking, but not surprising, are the justification and the victim claiming that have emerged throughout the world, including right here in our community and on my campus at Rutgers. And inevitably, the deniers have their day, even though the Hamas murderers themselves took videos of their actions and posted them online in celebration. This denial of plain facts is no doubt a result of cognitive dissonance. After all, Jewish victimhood is incongruous with the image of the Jew as all-powerful and bloodthirsty. Thus, when Hamas declared that Israel had bombed a hospital, The New York Times and all the world believed them immediately. This outrageous accusation has now been independently disproven, but no matter. The world continues to repeat the lie because it fits with what journalist Yair Rosenberg has called the oldest conspiracy theory in the world, antisemitism. To be crystal clear, I do not, nor does anyone I know, and I'm sure no one here tonight, desire or celebrate the loss of innocent Palestinian life. That loss of innocent Palestinian life will stop when the world is rid of Hamas. I thank Mayor Foster and council members who have stood with Israel and with the local Jewish community. Looking ahead, if the Highland Park Council plans to make any statement on the war between Israel and Hamas, I trust it will do so with a moral clarity that stares at the truth unflinchingly, unsuited by lies and conspiracy theories. I trust it will recognize Israel's absolute obligation to destroy Hamas. I trust it will stand with Highland Park residents who are grieving and those who now risk their lives to defend the world from its darkest forces. Thank you.
I'll come back to 20623rd Avenue. I've heard the blood curdling sounds of Hamas jihadists shouting "Allahu Akbar", celebrating over the murdered body of Shani Luke, a German Israeli slaughtered while attempting, while attending the festival of peace and love. This is the sound of religious hate, of Palestinian Nazis striving to finish the job Hitler undertook with the Final Solution. There are people in this town whom I have heard were planning to come here and demand a Palestinian flag representing these bloodthirsty mass murderers, celebrating their evil work, be hosted in town. There is a thin line between civilization and barbarism. We must not fly barbarism's flag of Islamic fanaticism and genocide. The headline reads, "Hamas Had Plans To Destroy, To Deploy Chemical Weapons, Poisonous Gas Like From The Death Chambers Of Auschwitz." I saw a video of Israelis tossed alive into a ditch filled with murdered bodies where they were then shot dead like the Jews of Kiev or Babel in 1941. I thank God for the decent peoples in this town, for Mayor Foster, that she not won the election. I shudder to think of her right now, for the council members. I came before the mayor and council in 2019 and 2020 and warned about the hatred spread by JVP and SJP and like-minded organizations. Their hateful inflammatory rhetoric, I said, leads to violence. I hung up a picture to show as an example. It was a Palestinian holding a blood-soaked hand from a window to a cheering crowd celebrating the murder of a Jew. The Palestinian flag, like the sloshka, is stained with the blood of Jews. It could be stained with the blood of every Jew in this town, including those who betray the Rome people. The Palestinian executioners made no such distinctions. Away from the bloody rape and murder scenes in Israel, evil comes to town in smooth tongues pontificating about human rights and equating self-defense with the premeditated butchering of women, children, and infants. I know we will sing no to the Palestinian flag. The day will come when the supporters of terrorist murderers will be held accountable. But you, Mayor and council, will be praised for acting like the decent human beings that you are.
Mayor, I know Zoom attendees with their hands raised, and there were 12 people there at this time. Thank you.
You're with me for a moment. I lost track of my paperwork. Thank you, everyone, for coming. And thank you for your statements. Would the council like to take a five-minute recess? Okay. Give me a moment. Now we're going to move on to a work session. I didn't, there will be no formal action taken. The best practices, and Terry will be discussing that. And then after that, executive session, if needed. On our executive session, we have resolution number 1023-239. Resolution authorized an executive session, JSN versus Highland Park. Redevelopment negotiations will 1/23, right, in a half a minute. Motion to adopt or reject?
Motion to adopt.
Motion. I need a second. Okay, sorry. Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilman Pustonik?
Yes.
All right, now we're going to move down to...
Mayor, if I may, I don't have a very extensive presentation on the best practices, so you may want to save the trip down.
All right, so Terry, you could just talk about the best practices.
Unless you really want to.
No, no.
As you all may recall, maybe, I don't know, Jason, if you're familiar with this from your time in New Jersey, but each year towns have to fill out what's called the Best Practices Checklist. It's something that the NJDCA puts out there. It covers a wide range of questions and topics around finance, administration. Sometimes they're even just probing to find out what towns are working on. But essentially, their, their, their stick is that they won't give you your full state aid allocation if you don't fill it out and if you don't score a certain amount of points on the checklist. I'm going to kind of do a spoiler. I'm pleased to report, after going through the checklist with the CFO, we got, you need at least 29 points to have no aid withholding, and we had 37.5 points. So we're well within the budget. And so I wanted to just kind of put that, so relax. And so I have copies I can share with you, but like, it's, it's mainly best practices and/or new regulation maintenance. So it's basically a way for them to remind towns gently that there are these new regulations and have you been following them? And sometimes, most of the time, the answer is yes. If there's, there's sometimes chance we're going to, and you can answer prospectively. And sometimes there's a good reason we haven't, and we answer accordingly. So I'm happy to provide everybody here a copy of our responses. I have that printed out. But in the past, I haven't gone blow by blow because there's, let me see, a total of 67 questions. So it could get kind of time-consuming. There were a lot of questions this year, and they were not point-earning or taking away around their, the new requirements around lead paint inspections. So they were clearly trying to probe towns to see how is implementation going on that, things like that. So sometimes it's as much data gathering from them as it is kind of reminding us what, what best practices are and what we should be doing. So that's kind of the sum total of my presentation. What will happen next is Zariah, the CFO, will, I submitted, then she has to submit. And then after tonight, Jen can certify that I at least put it on the agenda, put it before you, put it on your radar, gave you the opportunity. I'm happy to share the report. And if you want to talk about any of the specific answers in more detail, I'm happy to do that. But I don't think this format really lends itself to it. So that's all I was prepared to talk about unless anybody had any other questions. Thank you.
I don't think we're going to move to much question. It's a very heavy night.
Coming after.
Yeah. We just experienced a lot.
Yeah.
So we're going to move into executive session now in the fish, in the, in the, in the conference room.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? All in favor? Thank you.